All right, we're going to call our Select Board meeting for February 5th, 2020, to order. Going to start with our consent agenda. We have minutes from December 4th, 2019, and December 5th, 2019. We have warrants AP 2029, AP 2030, AP 2030 S, AP 2031, AP 2031 S, PR 2015, and PR 2016. We are going to award the Plainville Cemetery headstone rehabilitation to Gravestone Services of New England. The same type of work at Old Hadley Cemetery to Gravestone Services of New England. We have marijuana RFQ, which I just want to put to the side and talk about after the consent agenda. We have common victular inspired by opportunity, DBA Wendy's. Common victular, casual concepts, DBA Moes. We have a PVTA matching grant, which we are going to hold right now. We have the town election warrant signing. And then we have the Hadley Police Department dispatch full-time, which I'm going to let Deputy Chief Bryant talk about. So I have a motion for those items that we do have on the consent agenda.
Because the items remaining on the consent agenda, make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We can do the dispatch appointment.
So, I'm Deputy Chief Bryant, the Hadley Fire Department. I'm representing the public safety for a new hire tonight. This is Carly Hamlin. She's a resident of Chicopee, Mass. for 23 years. Carly was our final interview for potential candidates for our last vacancy for full-time dispatch. Carly impressed the interview panel with insights into concepts like work ethic, integrity, that many of us haven't heard described by people with much more interview experience. While Carly does not yet have the certifications required to step directly into the full-time dispatch role, what she does have is incredible work ethic and willingness to do whatever she can to learn and become an excellent dispatcher. Should this board accept the recommendation, Carly will train as a full-time employee, and we expect that she will be able to handle the difficult job of public safety dispatching very soon. On behalf of the public safety, I'd like to recommend Carly Hamlin as our new full-time dispatcher.
Is that moved?
Seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome, board.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good night, Evan.
Good night. And then the marijuana RFQ, I just wanted to set that aside because we have received two requests or two proposals for that one remaining license. And I was wondering if we, what we wanted to do, if we wanted to just form, it could be two of us on the Select Board, whatever, to just review those proposals and make a recommendation to the rest of the Select Board, or how we wanted to handle those RFQs right now.
So just to bring everybody up to speed, I did review both applications. One was from outfit from Arizona called Mint.
Mint.
And the other one is from Connecticut called Had Leaf.
What a, almost have a marketing back line.
The differences between the two organizations are microscopic at this point. They responded adequately to all of the questions that we asked in the RFQ. It does appear that Mint has a better financial position to carry their project forward, but the location that they've selected, I think we need to receive an opinion from the zoning enforcement officer as to whether it complies with our zoning bylaws.
Where might that be?
That would be at the Midas Center next to the Hocho's and the Hampshire Mall.
Pretty close to the existing licensee.
Yeah.
Very close.
How about the other one, where's there?
The other one is located inside of the Hampshire Mall.
Really?
It's a smaller operation. In terms of revenue to the town, they're pretty much neck and neck. And in terms of their response to this to our request for other things such as security, traffic counts, audits of their gross finances, they both responded favorably to doing that.
So it does seem like somebody should go through, you know, have the criteria and check out the criteria and rank them.
Yeah, I mean, they're both very detailed proposals. David showed them to me this afternoon, and you know, I wasn't going to pan through them in seconds.
I've heard of one going in the mall, yeah.
Yeah, that's why I think it might take a little more time to kind of vet it and see if they, how each one weighs, because there's questions on both. But I just feel like making a decision right now without really much research, we didn't know how many we'd get when we put out RFQ and that kind of thing, so.
Whereabouts in the mall?
I don't know.
Where's the, sorry, just the timing? Is there time pressure to respond?
Not on our part. Had Leaf says that they can get their project done in two months. No, that's a real, it's September 2020. And Mint says that they can get their project done by next February. So it'll be a year.
Name that, too.
So, I guess I would have to look at the rules, but isn't there some, I know it's been a controversy in the past of having these locations near school zones and churches and things like that. And I just wonder if that's an issue with being, the mall being an entertainment kind of complex for kids with interstate and go-karts and things like that.
Movies and arcade.
So, something.
Roller skating.
Something to look into, yeah?
Yeah, no, there's a little, it's not simple.
To look at there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So David, Christian, do you want to do that?
I can, I can, I don't mind reviewing some of them.
So I'd have to look for an opinion from Tim for the applications. I think if he rules one or both of them out, that causes something. And I'll try to get that answer from him in the next day or so.
And they would have to still go before the planning board?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Special permit.
Yeah, if you, if you decide at any point to say yes to the proposal, all you're doing is telling them that they're eligible. They still have to comply with all the town requirements. You still have to negotiate the community agreement.
Can we check with the Cannabis Control Commission to see if there is any issue with being in a mall like that? Because that might be a non-starter, something we're going to have to look at.
Yeah, exactly. So I think there's kind of that initial screening we should do with Tim, and then, you know, if it requires further review, then kind of dig into it and make a recommendation. So, that sounds good.
Sure.
Okay. I don't think we have to vote on that. We can just, we can just, since we don't have to make a decision, there's no real rush, but let's try not to let it linger too long, I guess, so we can get back to them.
Probably a process of reset that we were going to.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. All right.
Public comment?
Oh, yeah, we can do public comment real quick. Is anyone here for public comment tonight? Fifteen minutes allocated for that. Good? All right.
Can I just take this time? I think, I'd like to take my time now instead of at the end of the thing, since we're going into there. I wanted to talk about people that have passed.
Yeah.
Within the past, we've had a rough beginning to this year with certainly very nice people that have passed on, and one of them was Assistant Chief, Deputy Chief Ed Dukovich. I just want to put out there that Chief Spankable did a wonderful job with his department, as did our police also participate in that. But coming over the bridge and seeing Northampton Fire by Duffy's, their tire lined up to give the last salute to Ed also, I just want to put a shout out to thank you to Northampton for participating and making it really a great send-off to Ed. And all the past fire personnel that came out that have retired, but came out to say their goodbyes to him and participate in the ceremony also was very touching, and they did a really nice job. So thank you to both Chiefs and especially Chief Spankable for giving Ed a great send-off that he deserved. That being said, we also lost a very nice man. Ed Kelly had passed. My remembrance is, of course, I knew Kathy from working at the hospital, and it always amazed me how she was able to get out of the house and go and work as a nurse and take care of 12 kids. But when Ed said, yep, you got two Hadley fellows up here in North Hadley, and they went to Holyoke and got two sisters, and each one married a sister. And between them, they had 20 children. So needless to say, you know, Ed's participation in, when I first went on school committee, his last two children were playing at Hopkins Academy, and that was Bridgette and Bill. And so I got able to watch them participate in all the sports that they did, but Ed and Kathy were right there. And Ed was right there, I can say it now on TV, he would come in to get his injections in his knees in my office, just so that he could participate and go to his grandchildren's now sports event. So he certainly was a family man, was a Hadley man. He participated for many years on our sewer commissioner, commission before we changed that over, so, you know, our very sincere condolences to their family and for being who they were. He is, both of them, so that's my say for tonight.
Well, thank you, Joyce. Yeah, thank you for acknowledging everyone. And my condolences, too. Let's just, since Mark is here, let's just jump to the West Street parking item on the agenda. We just wanted to clarify an issue of parking on the West Street Common. The Select Board serves as the town's highway commissioners, and any parking requirements or restrictions need to be coordinated and approved by the Select Board. I just wanted to get the board's buy-in to send a letter to the Planning Board concerning any proposed parking restrictions. Basically, you know, Dave and I were doing a little bit of research this afternoon on, seems like Mass General law basically covers that the Select Board has purview over the streets, parks, those kind of things. And the Planning Board has control over zoning and everything related to that. We can't say that you can use streets as parking in their restriction of the zoning, but, you know, any parking on the streets and those kind of things would be in the Select Board's purview, and we already discussed with you about the parking, no parking signs and those kind of things with that involved. So just wanted to make that clear and send a letter to the Planning Board regarding that. I don't know if you guys have anything else to add?
Just, my question is, so the Common also falls completely under the Select Board, too, as far as its usage, right?
Yes.
Want to include that in the letter?
Yeah.
Just to be clear.
I mean, there are, have been several families throughout the summer months and things like that, that do use the Common to park vehicles, and I don't think we've ever said anything to them at all.
Yeah.
You know, it's not something that's done 12 months out of the year. And having already set guidelines for you for what, I think that should suffice for our cause on this side.
Yeah, and I don't want to necessarily open up the floodgates, anybody can park anywhere, but, you know, we had that discussion, we came to an agreement, I don't want to send you mixed messages.
And we posted.
Yeah.
We would just like them to park on, on the road, not on the lawn, and just go with that, you know, that's, that's all that we're asking.
And I would hope that, you know, the Planning Board may not, not agree with the contents of the letter when they get it, but, I mean, I would hope that the Chair would reach out to you directly and not involve people who are going before the Planning Board in the, if there's a purpose.
I appreciate you taking the time to discuss it. It has been a difficult process for us, and it's, we're currently in the stall side of things, because we can actually do what we want to do without them approving our site review. So it's, we'll see how it goes at the next meeting, but hopefully with your support, everything will move forward, and we'll be able to actually redo our building and the properties as such, so we'll be able to alleviate some of the excessive parking on the Common, so.
I know you're working towards making it whatever it should be. You know, you bought that piece of property of good faith to help, you know, offset what you needed to do for your business.
Yeah.
And we appreciate what your business has brought to the town, so we would like to, you know, assist you in that way.
Yeah. Support you as best you can, it's great to have you here, so, you know. All right, anything else regarding that, or?
Right.
Pretty good. David, we'll try to get that letter out this, this week? Do you have time?
We can, we can put this together very quickly.
Okay. I know I don't have a lot of time to be, but.
Are you at the Planning Board meeting in two weeks? The 18th?
Okay. Great. Did you want to?
I was going to say, I was just going to make a motion that we send the letter as requested, just outlining what the actions we've taken on the Common. And just that's as far as we're, as far as we want to go at this point.
And clarify jurisdictional issues.
Yeah, clarify jurisdictional issues.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you.
Good night.
What time is it? 6:47. Uh, let's see.
Trade show report?
We could, we could do that real quick. Who wants to start? Molly, do you want to start?
Sure. So, great trade show, as always. I think the speakers this year, they're particularly good. And the trade show itself, in terms of the, boy, I mean, it just seems year over year, it's the same people when you roll through the.
Trade show.
The trade show itself.
Yeah.
But it's always good to catch up with people and have some conversations, so, you know, we were able to do that. The breakout sessions, there were a variety of them this year, and, you know, again, we kind of fanned out and tried to go to different ones. There were a lot of housing and economic development were big topics of conversation this year, not surprisingly because of the Governor and Lieutenant Governor's ongoing initiative to point out the fact that Massachusetts is just becoming way too expensive for people to live, and how that kind of filters out to the local level in terms of what localities can do relative to helping bring some housing stock onto the market. So, that was really where I focused a lot of my time and energy, and also talking, it's always a great opportunity to talk to our neighbors. So I had a lot of good conversations with Sunderland and Whately, and again, the commonality of issues people are facing with infrastructure, housing, affordable housing, all of that.
Yeah, I'll just add, I thought it was a really great speech by Governor Baker, just kind of talking about how, you know, politics at our level is very functional, where like you get up more levels and people get more divided over party and over all these things, and how it's nice being in this realm where everybody can kind of get along, and we're focused on common issues and getting the town together and all these things. And I just thought that was a really great speech, he said it much better than I did, but that was, that was really a highlight of the, of the conference to me. Again, just to reiterate what Molly said, is the housing and economic development, I went to one really great talk on that, and what people are doing in, in other towns, kind of collaborating MassWorks grants with private partnerships and towns working with developers to kind of redo infrastructure, redo project to, to support housing and economic development. One thing that stood out was just when we're thinking about designing projects, doing 25% design, so that when MassWorks grants become available, make them more appealing to get accepted. If we already have some design work done, can get funding more likely in that scenario. So when we're thinking about capital planning and those kind of things, if we can think about doing design work in our capital plans, to have things in our pocket for future projects. What else, what else was there? Oh, and just, we had a meeting with the Western Mass delegation, and it sounds like we're going to have another Western Mass conference coming up. I forget when that was, probably in the fall?
October.
Yeah, yeah, in the fall. But talking about secession planning.
Was it Edwards that was going to put that?
John Edwards, yeah, yeah. So, so that kind of stuff.
They may even try to get Richie Neal there.
Yeah, they were thinking of getting Richie Neal there.
Some people want to communicate with him directly.
Yeah. What he can do for us, which, right after that, there was an announcement about him talking about East-West Rail in the paper that I thought was ironic, so.
I didn't ask what I read that.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so, so that was great. I don't know what else I have, but there was a lot to digest.
I was sorry I missed it, I could not have packed my way through the day and a half, no way. But did you, were you able to get any credits for MIA?
Yeah, I think we were, yeah. Yeah, we did get some.
Some of the conferences.
Yeah, and Chris Okafor was there, and Ed O'Connor was there before he left. So it was great seeing them there, too, and being able to spend some time together.
Networking.
Yeah, yeah.
Nice.
And David, do you have any follow-ups, any highlights?
Yeah, so I missed the Governor's speech on, because I went to a technical training on how to address unfunded, not unfunded, yeah, unfunded liabilities such as OPED and pensions. So we got some hands-on training in strategies. Turns out that pension liabilities are emerging as a critical issue for many cities and towns now. I attended sessions on reimagining wellness programs for better employee health, and since we have a grant for that purpose, I found that was very helpful. We went to a session on shared services among small towns and how best to use the resources of regional planning agencies in order to divide between two towns such, such functions as police and public safety. There were business meetings galore, the Managers Association, the Select Board Association, Small Town Administrators of Massachusetts, and then the Granddaddy of all the Municipal Association itself. A lot of committee work with the Managers, networking with colleagues on a variety of topics, meeting the representatives from the Western Massachusetts communities to plan for that cover conference, and then gathering resources and opportunities from vendors and state agencies. So I found my time there very valuable. Some years I'd go there and I'm not as favorably impressed, but this year I thought was a very good year.
Great.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe, real quick, we have five minutes here, is the Valley Bike Share Program, since that will be quick. Basically, Valley Bike Share Committee has awarded Massachusetts to establish an electric bike exchange project for the region. Hadley has been invited to participate. Basically, the Valley Bike Share Program would like to put these stations at the malls, not in downtown Hadley here, you know, Town Hall, Library, or the Senior Center, more in the mall area to enhance their network. And we've sent a letter to Pyramid, from the Hampshire Mall, to see if they would be interested in participating in this program. We haven't really gotten a response from them, and.
We have not received a response from them.
We have not received a response from them. And so, basically, we're really recommending that we don't sign on to this MOU right now because we just, it doesn't make, we don't have any town property near the malls where they want to put the stations. It would involve some town money and different resources that we just don't have right now. And so, you know, I think it would be different if we were talking about the library, the Senior Center, Town Hall, that kind of enhances our community a little bit more, where at the malls, it's self-serving to that network and not really to us as a town. So I'm just kind of recommending that, you know, we don't sign on to this right now. I would like to keep the door open in case opportunities come up in the future, but for now, don't see us really wanting to do this, unfortunately. Because I would like to do it personally, but I just don't see it jiving with the town's goals.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of it either, right now, costing us money, so.
Yeah, yeah.
It certainly doesn't seem to make sense for a transportation perspective to stick it behind the mall, where there's already, you know, plenty of parking on that, but there's plenty of parking there, where it could be in the center of town, maybe to get to Northampton to do, you know, other things there.
And their thoughts are, you know, it's station to station, so if they had a station near the malls, it's a place where you could take a bike from UMass, from Northampton, from Amherst, to the malls, park it there, and then go, so that you're not getting charged as it's sitting locked up to a light post or whatever, you know, so. I see it fitting into their mission, I just don't know how we do that as a town, it's more getting buy-in from the malls to do it, so. And there might be, or, you know, LL Bean is right there, EMS, Whole Foods, I mean, so many companies are there that might be interested in participating with them, but I just see the town as a middleman, that's not really helping.
Yeah, okay.
That's a shame.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So, I don't know if we need to vote, do we need to vote on that?
I'll make a motion that we pass over executing an MOU at the present time.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, does that get us to seven? Close enough?
Close enough.
Okay, so let's do our Community Development Block Grant Appointment. And David, are you presenting that, or are we? Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chris Dunphy of Pioneer Valley.
Chris Dunphy. Thank you for coming, sorry.
Thank you very much for having me this evening, I appreciate it. So my name's Christopher Dunphy, I'm a principal planner at the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. I've been largely administering community development block grants there for, gosh, over 20 years now. And we're here to present a proposed application on Hadley's behalf. The grant is due on March 6th. So just a little background, the Community Development Block Grant Program was started in the 70s, largely to address urban issues, but over the years, it's been expanded to, to offer opportunities to smaller towns and cities as well. So each and every year, Congress will convene and decide on appropriating a budget for the Community Development Block Grant Program. And once that budget has been established, HUD, they're the federal agency, they distribute funds to what we call entitlement cities by formula. So these entitlement cities automatically get CDPG funds to do different programs and services, you know, with the community development block grant monies. So what's kind of left over goes to the state agencies, and in this case, it's the Department of Housing and Community Development. And they offer, through a competitive grant application process, smaller cities and towns to compete for what's left over through this block grant process. And that's where we, where we come in, because we're actually pretty good at structuring these grant applications for the smaller towns within our region, and at administering the projects if they get funded. So each, you know, over the years, we see the state sort of tweaks the applications, and they make minor changes, which affects the competitive level of the communities that, you know, may want to apply. And for over the years, you know, the way that they had structured it, kind of, to a large extent, not altogether, but left Hadley out of the process because it was just so competitive, you really have a really good chance of obtaining the funds. Periodically, I think we've been able to obtain one or two here and there when we regionalize you with other communities, which improved your scoring. So low and behold, the regional process, it no longer is a benefit competitively, but they made other changes that did make it more competitive for you folks. And so that's why I'm here, because I think we can have a reasonably decent chance of obtaining funds through this program. So what we're proposing, at least for this coming year, that's what they're going to call the fiscal FY, the federal fiscal 2020 year, okay? We're proposing that we continue a housing rehab program. We're proposing that we continue a housing rehab program. I think it was maybe three or four years ago, there was a program here in Hadley, and I remember actually visiting some of the residents that we were serving at that time. So we'd like to continue housing rehab services to qualified residents in the town of Hadley. And at, at one thing I want to say, David, if you remember, there was a target area then, there is no longer a target area. They threw out the requirement of having a target area, so anyone town-wide is eligible for this proposed program. So we do have a waiting list, I looked at it today. The waiting list consists of clients that we never got to last time around, as well as some new clients that we've obtained through some recent outreach. I visited the Council on Aging and, and I did a, you know, presentation there and we made forms available. It's only yielded about four or five, by the way, so far. So, you know, it's out there, so if there are people that are interested in housing rehab, there are forms available at the Counseling on Aging office. I saw some here as I was entering the building, and, and I believe there's some available in the Selectmen's Office as well.
It's on the website as well.
Yeah, so they're widely available, and I would strongly encourage folks that have an interest in housing rehabilitation services to fill it out and send to us, because these applications, as I said, they're competitive. So what I'll need to do over the next few weeks leading up to the application is establish need, demand, and feasibility. So feasibility is not an issue, we've been doing this for years and we know how to manage it, we have a team in place. It's the need and demand that we're, the, the, these forms, we're calling them interest forms at this point in time, show the state, oh, look, there are people lining up to, to get this, these services if they're made available, you know? And what we've also done is we've kind of done a survey throughout the town, analyzing the condition of your housing stock, and taking some photographs, and demonstrating to the state that, yes, well, there are people that want it, they're in line for the services, and yes, there is demonstrated need based on the physical conditions of some of the properties that we've seen randomly. So that's sort of the need and the condition. So the housing rehab program, we're proposing a modest, relatively modest program of maybe getting funding for perhaps 12 units, you know, based on the need and demand that we're, we're seeing right now, we think that might be a, a good start to get back into this program. Those that qualify, qualification is based on income, and they use the, the threshold of 80% of median income. Now, I'll translate that for a household of one, one person, that's, again, it's low to moderate income, that's up to $49,000, or 49 and some odd change. So anyone that earns an annual of income of that or less would qualify. And of course, for a household of two, it's a little bit higher, and for three, and so on and so forth. So the program, if someone applies, were to apply, and they get accepted, we can address state sanitary building code issues. This is not a renovation program, this is not a home expansion program, this is rehabilitation. We're talking your basic building code systems, roofs, windows, siding, weatherization, electrical, plumbing, people that really need this type of work to bring their, their homes back up into a safe, healthy, livable manner, you know? So it, it's a pretty popular program. We can provide up to $40,000 of assistance for those that qualify, and the assistance comes in the form of deferred payment loan, and I went into some quite detail with the Council on Aging. So the deferred payment loan, think of it in two aspects, okay? They call this the anti-speculation and recapture plan. The anti-speculation part is we don't want to just provide this assistance so people can speculate, improve their homes and sell, you know, we want people to remain in their homes. So that's why it, it's a deferred payment loan over 15 years through this recapture plan. Now, the recapture plan starts like, if you were, say, to get 30,000, the, the, the lien would be filed for 30,000, and then it would go down over 15 years, and then at the end of the 15 years, it becomes vacated, it becomes deferred, you know? So that's the recapture part. And if, you know, sometimes someone does have to sell for whatever reasons, they're moving, or their lifestyles are changing, or whatever have you, and that money would be recaptured and made available for other people that would want to, to get into the program. So that's the, the anti-speculation and recapture plan. There are no payments during this 15-year period, and it's forgivable. So that's the essence of the, the housing rehabilitation program. The other two projects that we're presenting are planning projects. One of them is an Americans with Disabilities Act Transition Plan. Now, there's been a, the requirement of actually having a transition plan goes back to the early 1990s with the Americans with Disabilities Act. And it had been hoped when the act was presented, everyone would develop these plans and they'd have them on file, and, and it basically is a document which shows how a community will transition from accessibility non-compliance into compliance, you know? And you don't have one, to my understanding, that meets the, the standards of, of the act. So by doing this, analyzing the buildings, and it, it puts you in line for a whole other sorts of resources that might become available. For instance, the block grant program, you cannot get funds through the block grant program to modify your public spaces for accessibility unless you have this transition plan. The Massachusetts Office on Disability, they annually offer a grant program to communities that have the transition plan. So mostly, I think a lot of your buildings are in pretty good shape, but I think there are probably areas that you're not 100% right up to stuff in terms of compliance, yeah.
We think you're right.
So if funded, this plan would hire a professional consultant that would work with an appointed committee and begin to analyze your buildings, put it all down on paper, and kind of come up with a strategy of prioritization and, and seeing what we could do to address those deficiencies. So that's one of the planning projects. The other planning project, we've been working a little bit with some of your committees here in town, and I know you've done plenty of work on this, but it involves the Russell School. And so I've had staff that have that with Allen, and we've had some conversations, and we know that you've done quite a bit, but we feel now it's maybe time to take another look at it with, with other resources that may be available, with other people that might be available. So ourselves, we have a staff consisting of myself and a historic preservationist and other people on the PVPC staff, but we'll also bring in another professional consultant that might take a new spin at it, working with an appointed, appointed committee, Allen and others, and, and any other folks that you think might be appropriate to, to help steer this effort, and see if we can get that Russell School back to reuse in the way that you want to see it reused. So those are the two planning projects, along with the housing rehabilitation program, comprise what we're proposing as the FY 2020 CDBG application for Hadley.
All right, does anybody have anything to say about it? Or, it is a hearing, so I don't know if anybody from the crowd wants to...
It's a public hearing.
Wants to put any information out there or say anything?
Are you, this particular mass preservation projects fund?
Yeah, yeah.
Would, would, would be something that you would deal with, with, with this committee as well? Is that one of the grants that you're talking about?
One of the projects within the grant.
Within the grant.
The grant would have three projects, housing rehabilitation, the accessibility planning study, and the Russell School reuse feasibility study. That would be part of the grant.
A reuse feasibility study?
Correct.
Okay. Not necessarily actual preservation on the building?
No, we need the town to, to decide on the best use, you know, with, with the committee, the, the board's input and community input. We want the community to come together and, and decide as a community, what is the best reuse for this facility.
Takes a long time to do that, isn't it? Here we are, north of Hadley.
Yeah. Go ahead, Allen.
Two questions. Assuming you get the, we get the grant, we apply for it and get it, and it's a chunk of money, is the money divided up into three separate plots that, you know, are basically, that's it? Or could you put, move money from one plot to the other if, if you, you know, made sense to do that?
Um, there are three distinct projects, we're presenting a budget, you know, based on those three distinct projects. Housing rehabilitation, budget for that. The Americans with Disabilities Act Planning Study, a budget for that, and a budget for the feasibility study.
So that's specific budgets for the specific projects?
Right.
Not just his budget.
And if, and if we're able to, to, to hire consultants for one, that's, you know, one, they may be hungry and think that the town, through an RFP process, hires a consultant, and that consultant is able to present a, a, you know, a contractor or budget at a good price, and it, it, we don't use it all, yeah, then we could talk about moving monies from one line item to another. But we're going into this, this grant with the idea of having set budgets for each project.
My second question is, for the Russell School feasibility study, that's obviously a planning document, we're looking at different things, marketing.
Yep.
Various things that we need to look at, some of which we may, some committee may be looking at already before this study actually gets rolling.
Right.
And I'm thinking that the most likely situation would be we'd have some recommendations of finding and trying to narrow what the options are, and then this feasibility study would, would take it further, assuming we don't find some, some angel of Hadley's to, you know, help take the building off our hands before that, which is unlikely. But my other question is, could the grant application be structured to get money that would be available, not just for planning, but for stabilizing the building?
Not at this point in time. Maybe, you know, once we're operational through this process, and we've been able to fulfill what we, the goals and objectives of the planning study, and we find that there's funds available, well, maybe we could pitch something to the state, but a lot of it is predicated on what the reuse is, you know?
Right.
You know, so if we determine right away in the planning study that the reuse is going to be for, for, for the primary benefit of low to moderate income persons, then the answer I would say would be yes. But if the use is like to, to build something that's real fancy and it's not really to the benefit of low to moderate income persons, I would say the answer would be no, if that kind of answers your question a little bit.
Yep.
And I just have two questions. What would, so the applications do March 6th, and when is the award date?
So we don't know, you know, because it's a competitive application, they're being submitted from all over the state, it's really predicated on a team at the DHCD reviewing them, and then whatever politics get, get involved with, you know, different inputs from, at different levels of the state government over there. But typically, we usually find out what communities receive the award by July, and contracts will begin disseminating at that point in time, so it's a possibility by, say, September, we can actually begin to launch activities.
Okay, that would be about the timeframe. And then, you know, some of the stuff, I just, um, you know, get grants to do certain things or get certain assistance, but we don't, we're just tied with staff here and committees, and so, yeah, would there be a point person that would kind of be managing these projects and...
So we're, we're writing it on the premise that we're going to be managing it soup to nuts, you know, with input from whoever you point to work with us.
And there's a line item in there for you.
Right. So we get paid through the administration portion of the grant to, to manage it on your behalf.
Okay.
So we'd assist with the procurement documents, we, we, you know, everything, but we're doing it on your behalf based on your direction.
Yeah.
Okay? So we don't want, so it's a, it's a community grant, but we have the capacity and the ability to, to manage most things, you know, with input from, received from this board. The Board of Selectmen, specifically the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, is the executive officer that will be responsible for signing the grant.
Okay.
Yep, so we're, we're very skilled at preparing RFPs, doing the procurement. I'm a Massachusetts certified public purchasing official, I imagine you, you have a, David's the one as well for the community, you folks are. So I would work with them, and we'd, we'd put together, you know, the proposals, and then, you know, the only thing I would ask is a committee, you know, your appointed committee, I would assume maybe on the Russell project, you already have one.
Yeah, we already have one there, so that's...
So maybe that committee could also be used for the, for the other project. You know, along with the building inspector would be...
For the housing rehabilitation?
Do you need a committee? I'm sorry?
For housing rehabilitation?
No, that, that, we have a complete staff that just runs that. We, we do the income qualification, we prepare the contracts. I will say, there will be some work on the part of your accountant and your treasurer to move funds along as, as we, as the grant gets underway.
Okay.
So do we need to take a vote tonight to accept this, or because it's a hearing, do we have to wait?
I had a proposed motion that was on the forms.
It's in your attached hearing. On the one we called agenda.
Oh, at the bottom there, proposed motion. Oh, and one other thing, if we do make a motions voted, would it, would it help to get any kind of letter of support from like Joe Commerford and Dan Carey, kind of our representatives to endorse this?
There, we usually notify them along the way when things are under review, and they'll do whatever that they do, you know?
Yeah, yeah, just so they're, it's on their radar.
We'll let them know. Typically, we let all the area reps know what applications we have submitted. When you do talk about support letters, though, I guess I would ask, with your blessing, to, to approach the building inspector, the Council on Aging, you know, different entities, you know, I could actually put a draft letters for them in support of the different activities.
Okay.
Do you have an ADA coordinator?
David.
That's you, okay. So a letter from David, a letter from the Council on Aging, a letter from the building inspector.
Yeah, we have a municipal building committee, we have the Russell School, what's it called? Russell School Committee, is it called?
It's your committee.
I know, I'm trying to, what's the exact thing?
Russell School Subcommittee.
Russell School Subcommittee, yeah, yeah.
We're going to make it the Russell School Reuse Feasibility.
Yeah, 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 that's basically what it is, yeah.
So these letters that I'll be asking lend into the feasibility aspect. There, there's people in place, it's supported and the whole...
Who are we competing against?
Everyone across the state, you know, there's probably, probably going to be 40 to 50 applications submitted, based on my past experience, and of the 40 or 50, maybe 30 will be funded.
I'll make a motion, I'll, I'll read this.
That'd be great, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we authorize PVPC to prepare and submit on behalf of the town of Hadley, the proposed FY 20 Community Development Fund Grant Application to the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development. Application will be in an approximate amount of $532,000, not to exceed $800,000, as detailed in the public hearing. Projects are to include a housing rehabilitation program and two planning projects, the Russell School Reuse Feasibility Study and an Americans with Disabilities Transition Plan. Further authorize the Chair of the Select Board to sign all required forms, documents, and authorizations pertaining to the proposed FY 20 Hadley Community Development Fund Grant Application.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
You read that quite nicely, I was worried. Appreciate that.
Thanks, Chris.
I appreciate your time. There will, there'll be a few forms in advance of the application that you'll need to sign.
Yeah.
So it's mostly a digital application, there's just one very important cover sheet that has to be signed and sent by mail, and they actually have to receive it by that March 6th date.
Okay.
But most everything else is all online.
Okay, yeah, sounds great, yeah, thank you very much, Chris, for coming in.
Well, thank you very much for having me tonight.
Thank you.
And we'll be in touch, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, have a good day.
Thank you. Oh, and, sorry.
Don't you?
Please get those housing rehabilitation interest forms into us.
Great.
If there's any questions, Christopher Dunphy, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, 413-781-6045.
Great. Thank you, Chris, yeah, appreciate it. All right, let's do the Municipal Building Committee, Russell School Subcommittee, that's the name. You guys wanted to discuss, discuss the work.
Apologize, I'm biting my head holes, I'm just going to read my notes.
Oh, yeah.
Because I can otherwise think straight. So Dan, Dan's here. As you, as you may know, I chair Claire Carlson, that's the Chair of the Subcommittee. Has had to step back from her committee work due to personal reasons, and I was asked to fill in as acting Chair, which I've been doing. Right now, we're in the information gathering sta- Right now, we're in the information gathering stage, we've had three meetings and have scheduled several more meetings over the next three months. We've met with, then we have, Dan Regis has attended all our meetings for NBC, and also Stacy Cooney from the Historical Commission's also attending. We've met with a PVPC preservation planner who's given us some ideas and examples of historic building reuse. We hope to meet soon with developers and others who've had experience in reusing former school buildings. We're reviewing the existing documents and reports which have been done for the Russell School, for which there are several. We're also trying to get a handle on the short-term stabilization measures on the building that are either underway or planned. Our understanding of our marching orders from the Select Board, Town Administrator, and Municipal Building Committee is to come up with possible options for reuse or disposition of the building, to solicit public input and ideas, to periodically update the Select Board, and to have something ready before May Town Meeting. The Municipal Building Committee, people we met, would like to make sure that we look at possible public-private partnerships, and to look at the cost benefits of various options. We have set, excuse me, we've set out a couple of objectives and tasks that we're gonna try to accomplish by May. The first thing is to put together an options matrix which would describe various possible reuse disposi, or disposition options, and for each option, a description of the associated pros and cons, advantages and disadvantages to the town, likely costs, opportunities and obstacles, including legal regulatory requirements, and possible funding grants that might be available. The second thing is to solicit public input and ideas. We're leaning right now towards putting together a mailed survey to town residents in March or April, and we're working on that. We hope to have a summary of the findings, options, issues to present at Town Meeting and at the pre-Town Meeting Forum. We'll continue to reach out to town officials, town boards, and anybody else to get their thoughts, advice, and reality checks. And we'll be working with Chris, and I think he's, he or Lori Tanner from the Commission will be meeting with us on our next meeting, which is the 13th of February, to go into more detail about how that, that particular CDVG grant will work. And that's it.
Okay.
Good.
Yeah, sounds good, thank you for continuing to carry that ball forward, you know? You know, it's a big task, so, thank you.
It's gonna get better.
Yeah.
Do you want to say anything?
I just wanted to add, I think that the committee is a good idea to have a more focused committee to look at the future of this building. I would say that I have some concerns about forming a committee and, you know, paying too much attention to maybe what will happen to this building beyond this particular board generation. This is a piece of history that, you know, in the recent past, we've been neglect, you know, we've neglected this building and its deferred maintenance, and this is, this is our generation's fault. And I do not want to deprive a future generation of Hadley people of the opportunity to do it right. I feel, you know, bad that we lost the Russell School, I'm sorry, Hooker School, it wasn't, it wasn't the, the right building for us at the time, and we needed to make upgrades. We're tight for space, and we're forced to put two buildings on a very tight space. The contiguous land that connects the center of town, once it's lost, it's gone forever, and our kids, our grandkids do not have that to use. You know, they may be able to enjoy it, look at it from the outside, but they won't, if I were to sit on this board 10 years, 15 years from now, I would like to be sitting on this board in that building. And, you know, I may be among very few, I may be among very many, but we don't know because nobody has put this on town floor to find out what the people really think. And I fear that unless the people vote one way or the other, many things will happen, and, you know, that, you know, in a big oops, if people don't vote, you know, to dispose of the building, it will be held, you know, for another generation for people to enjoy. And, you know, we've seen by the latest election, people are saying, well, townspeople are sick of paying, you know, they're sick of their taxes going up, and so, all of the stuff that we needed wasn't voted for. And I, you know, I've talked to several people already that said, well, if I knew that that was on the line, I would have voted. And if, you know, we had some pretty bad things happen in town, and I'd hate to see this building, you know, disposed of, demolished, or sold. And again, I'm only one of probably many people who think that. I'm glad that the committee's together working on it, I will try my best to, you know, preserve the building. I know that there is a grant available that is not related to the block grant, it is a, let me call it up here.
Preservation Fund?
RAS Preservation Projects Fund.
Yeah, I went to that meeting, by the way.
Okay.
I don't know if we want, I could talk about it now, but.
The deadline is March 20th, and there is another workshop yet available, so, I mean, there's plenty of time to get money to stabilize the building.
Yeah.
And this has nothing to do with future use of the building, just save it so that, whether we own it or not, you know, at least we can, we can save it. It's deteriorating rapidly now, and these are funds that are available, and we have the opportunity now to gather the grant information and submit it. We have the numbers, we have the updated numbers. Larry Tuttle has provided us with updated numbers for a bunch of the projects that need to be done there. And it's just a matter of assembling a team, and, you know, fill in it, it's a PDF, you fill them in, and you go around and get the live signatures.
If I could suggest that maybe you and I could sit down with David.
With David, or?
And, because I could report back on what I brought back from that workshop that I attended yesterday.
Okay.
Down in Holyoke, and I've got the documents and the application forms, everything else, but there's a lot of hoops to jump through.
Sure.
And, you know, I'd love it if we could do it, right now, I don't feel terribly optimistic about whether we can do the things that need to be done before March 20th, but we could talk about it.
Other, you know, again, the library's been terrific about capturing grants to preserve their building, and if you asked them to chase this grant, they would do it and they would get it done. You know, we, the Municipal Building Committee would have to ask for their help to get such a grant done, but it can be done, and it can be done for that building. If it's not done for that building, at least do it for the good one, but I think that's where that grant money should go. And it's, it's possible, and, you know, is it, there's a lot of hoops, yes, there are. And I think that, you know, the town shouldn't be passing these up because, oh, it's March 20th. There's still a workshop available, if there's a workshop available, then there's time to submit the grant.
David, do you have, I was just gonna ask if you have time to meet with them and possibly fill out this grant, or work on it a little bit?
Yeah, we've done historic preservation grants in the past, so it's a valuable, valuable grant opportunity, it is a lot of work.
Okay.
So, I'm happy to meet with you and put that together.
And by the way, it's a magic grant.
If you have information from Larry Tuttle, I would very much like to see that, because that will guide our thinking.
Sure.
So, they're gonna meet with him?
Yeah.
Yeah, you talked about putting it on Town Meeting Floor or in front of the voters as far as making a decision. Would your committee be able to come up with some, I'm thinking like five or six different scenarios of how the building could be used, something along those lines, so that way we could put it on a non-binding ballot question, that way we can get some actual feedback? We did that for North Elley Hall.
Well, I'm thinking the survey would, you know, if we get a survey out on this, out before the Town Meeting, that would inform us, I think, I mean, I don't know, I mean, Town Meeting's obviously another, or a vote or something like that, but I think we have to, we have to bring people up to speed on what the real options are, what the pros and cons are.
Well, and I think we also have to have, we have to monetize it, because it's one thing for people to say, oh, you know, it could be a mixed use, or it could be low to moderate residential.
At what cost?
What's it gonna cost? I mean, it's all gonna keep coming back to that.
Well, there's two questions, what it's gonna cost, and what's it gonna cost the town? Because it's gonna cost something, but it may not be the town who has to pay for it.
Right, right.
So, that makes it a different proposition.
I was, I was gonna ask too, just out of what you're saying here, is I, I don't like the idea of taking it to a vote, because I feel like it's kind of like an uninformed decision, and it's more like from the heart, tear it down, keep it, and without a lot of background information. So, I was gonna say, can you guys strategize about a way to kind of roll it out?
Yeah.
You know, that might be appetizing to people, so like, what little crumbs can we leave at these various meetings that might build to the point where we ultimately have a vote? You know, so it's, I don't know if we could, where this process is gonna be and how you can envision it, and then how it can ultimately come to a vote, if that's two years out, if that's a year out, but maybe at Spring Town Meeting, we can have just a little something that shows where you're at, and kind of build some excitement about it, but not really, like, putting it to a vote.
When we built the Hadley Elementary School, we had three different scenarios of what type of school to put there.
Yeah.
And we gave the residents of the town the opportunity to put their input into saying what they would like to see there as an elementary school, and I think if you put that out there in your survey and ask the questions of, what, how would you want to repurpose?
Exactly.
These, that building, are you doing good one too, or are you just doing Russell?
No, just Russell.
Just Russell, what would you like to see Russell be?
Or here's some, it's a possibility.
Here's some scenarios that we can give you.
Or I'm even thinking like when downtown North Hampton, when they, when Faces left and they had all the things on the wall, just like, people put ideas up there, some of them were ridiculous and obscene, others were good ideas, so, you know, people could do, maybe there's something like that, that's like a community activity that we could have at the Spring Town Meeting that kind of is just building towards something bigger. I don't know, just kind of thinking about how to do this without killing the project before it starts.
These are the kinds of things we'll be kicking around for the next couple of months.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And as, I mean, I, I think they're two different things.
Yeah.
And I think that, you know, my, my biggest concern is immediate attention to what needs to be done.
Yeah.
So, that's why I mentioned that grant, it is available, and I know we have no money in this town for that kind of thing, and the town has no appetite to put money into something that they don't, you know, they, they put money into the things that they thought were important, the fire station, the senior center, the library, they, you know, they thought for sure these are the things that are really important, and the little things we're not gonna sweat for a few years. I don't know what people are thinking, but I know that that building would deteriorate rapidly if we don't do something and save it. You might not be making a decision on how we're gonna reuse this if you don't fix it now.
That's a good point.
And it's so important to take some action, and, you know, we, we voted to mothball that building so that it would become, you know, not such a liability for town, and we want to make sure that we can preserve it, well, let's, let's stay on that track, make sure we can save it. I just think it's that important for the future of town residents, the future of taxpayers, you know, the guy who pays to the CPA committee and wants that money to go to the right place.
Yeah. Can we get the updated numbers from Larry Tuttle? We haven't, maybe they just haven't gotten to us yet, but I know.
Went all over the place.
I gave.
Yeah, I saw that spreadsheet, and we're still trying to figure out how to match it up with the DRA records.
Yeah, you sort of have to match it with the DRA.
But really, we don't have to, he updated everything.
Yeah.
Everything that the, and VRA talked about fixing this, everything inside the building.
There's a lot of numbers there, and it is real confusing, and if we got together with David.
But for short-term stabilization, just to, really, the building is not mothballed, it's vacant, it's not mothballed. It's, it's not tight, so there's roof work, there's foundation work, there's drainage work, those are the three areas, if you solve those, that building could stand 100 years and never, and vacant, okay, and it would still be there. If we don't do those things, then it might, it might not be salvageable in two years, and all this work that we're doing about reuse might be just out the window.
Yeah.
So, and NBC's put forward some, you know, proposals, I think they have some roof work, they've been talking about fixing the porches, you know, and we could do that short-term, we'd have to go to the CPA to get the money, and that's, you know, not a guarantee, especially if they don't know exactly what we're gonna do with the building and whether we're throwing the money.
We have a lot of ifs out there right now, so we need to get something a little bit more positive.
But if we can narrow it down to the specifics of what we want to do, or should be doing, then maybe we can get, sink our teeth into that, maybe convince some people that it's worth doing, and that, and by the way, this preservation fund, you know, requires a match, the only logical match is CPA money.
CPA, yeah.
Okay? But, the CPA money, one of the things is, is the CPA money's gotta be in hand, and of course CPA money can't be authorized unless, until Town Meeting does. Town Meeting is not until, what, May 5th, 7th? That's after the date. Now, they told us, if your Town Meeting is afterwards, you could, and you have a warrant article, they'll give you the grace period of 21 days to, you know, if they approve the grant, then you've got 21 days to show them you've got the CPA money. But all this stuff has to roll out like in the next two weeks.
Okay.
Okay, we got that, and I think that you guys should get together with David.
Yeah.
CPA articles are due February 18th, so there is still time.
Yeah.
If you guys can meet with David before then, maybe we could put something in with CPA, maybe there could be this grant application, I don't know. Let's, let's end it with meeting with David and kind of going from there, I think that's a good idea.
I'm around all the time for the next two weeks. I'm around all the time for the next two weeks.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you both, thank you for coming, thank you for the opportunity, I'm excited about it, I know it's a lot of work and scariness, it's great, so thank you, yeah, yeah.
You're making my ears ring.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's just jump to sewer rates, and I don't know where we want to begin, Chris, I don't know if you want to kind of kick things off with where we're at, and I was just basically thinking of covering the bullet points you sent.
Yes.
And then kind of looking at the forecast model of kind of where sewer is at as well, you know, I don't know if you want to kind of present it a little bit, I don't mind kind of going through it too, whatever you, what you prefer.
That's what I would like to.
Kind of bend through it all.
That's what I would like to discuss with the Chairman.
Okay.
The bullet, the bullet points, and also to, to add that if it's feasible for the board to make arrangement, either two or one members of the board, they, I can spend time to go through, just like as you stopped by Friday.
Yeah.
That probably may also help, and then also, if they can, or the board can also tell us where we are in terms of the numbers we are using.
Yes. Yeah, with free cash and that kind of thing?
Yes.
Did we get free cash certified, or was maybe gonna happen by the end of today, by now?
It's not happened yet, I just checked the email.
Okay.
We did have a conversation with the Department of Revenue today, and they said, nothing wrong with our submission, they have to get approval from some higher-ups.
Okay.
So, it should be happening very shortly.
Yeah, any day now.
Yeah, it's pretty pathetic.
So, the sewer reserves appear to be coming in about $362,000, which is actually better than it performed last year, so that's, that's a ray of sunshine.
And this, this, we can't take you to the bank, but this is just?
This is an estimate.
Estimate.
So, do you want to run through those bullet points, Chris, or you? You?
Me.
Go ahead.
I just, I just, some suggestions, and some, a couple of bullet points was concerning sewer. Our view is that for the FY '19, we had a deficit of $40,000. The FY '20 stayed the same, we could not still have, we believe we could still have decreasing revenue because of, in part, the number they just gave us, like, tend to be a good number, but we, we're working with a 270, at least 270,000 as our number, based on, in part, because we have no actual number yet because of the free cash. I think that every year's service and cost tend to go up. One of the major costs for us is mandated liability from the quality bargaining agreements, we have to meet every requirement there. Also, even, even with the annual collar of 2% or the revenue report, we also have we also have, um, various pump stations. The pump stations and the, the, the plant itself is not the only issue. But most of our pump stations, we have these, all these engines and parts. Um, age has come to them, and whenever we have one or two down, it's usually a big number, five, $10,000 to get an engine. But we're very grateful that some of the repairs, our staff can do them. But we also at various times bring in vendors to, so, so those are the, our problems. We also, we also, if you look at the model, the model reflects very little in capital. We try not, because of where we are in sewer, we have, we've not been able to do major capital. We have some lineings to do. Uh, the good thing is that because we do annual investigation of our pipes, uh, so we have few areas where we have to line up. Uh, one of the major capital that is on our docket is the Route 9 pro, um, project. That would cost us some capital expenditure. And so looking at reserves, uh, and looking at these projects, we are very reluctant to, on, on an annual budget, put, put in some money to do more of repairs. We have, we can easily put in repairs, capital repairs of anywhere from 150 to 200,000, especially with the pipes that we have to put in some sleeves or repairs. So, and because we don't have to dig them up, but we have to go in, it's also not that, you have to not get a particular vendor who can, who does this kind of event. We, the, the other thing that is, um, I talked about label. We also have both water and sewer infrastructures, which is one of the things that I just mentioned. But we also have, um, our reserve amount, there's no exact way for us to look at the next five years and come before the board and say, yes, based on our formula, we have the projections. The usage is high because, which is a positive thing, we have businesses coming in. But the, we also cannot tell this, the board that, um, uh, we are ready, if for example, there's a failure in one of, in, in the plant. The plant is aged, so not every vendor has our equipment. So that also takes us behind. Um, when we were, when DEP and EPA came in last year to look at the plant, one of the things that we told them was that the board at that time was also looking at our rates to be able to get us in a better place. So at this point, we haven't gotten to that point. Now, before my time, Mr. Chairman, the, the, the town went through this structure, which Ty and Bond gave us, gave us a good structure at that time. And it was, they were playing with 15% and thinking that if the town could go a couple of years down, we may be able to sustain our reserve. But events has overtaken that. And also before the last time meeting ended, we also came before the board. We have, we had a couple of options that the board was looking at. I, I would still recommend, Mr. Chairman, that based on where we are and based on this, uh, format that Ty and Bond has put in for the town, I would recommend 15%, but I would recommend that if the board can take a look at our debt structure, they put into taxation, that will help us to at least be almost even. And then the board can also look at how can we increase, um, rates for maybe smaller numbers for the next couple of years that will get. And so when we have some of these projects that are just analyzed, we can come before the board, either we put it on the taxation or put it on both taxation and also whatever we have in our reserve. So this way, the, the red line will not be there anymore for some time. Another thing that I also like the board to take a look at, Mr. Chairman, is the issue of the way we bill, the billing. Right now, we go almost quarterly, three months. I don't know if it's something the board can take a look. It might be easier for us if we can go monthly. This way, the, whatever increase or whatever decision the board finally takes, uh, it will not be coming as a big number to our customers. It might be, you know, where somebody has to pay $10 right away, they may be, they may be paying $1, $2 some. So it, many communities have done this. It's easier to, but provided the board, uh, is able to give us a long-term approach on this. I think we will be able to come out of this and also be able to, in the next cycle of the CBA, um, quality bargaining agreement, my, I will also strongly suggest that the board should take a look at our current contract. Now, I know that it is not easy to take, take away anything that the board has given, but I suspect that sometime probably, there may be some other things that the union can give to us back. Or the issue of, which I've come before the board many times, to take a, take a look at the, the structure in terms of personnel. So those are, the, those are areas where I think we can also save money.
Okay.
Chris, can I just try to kind of distill what you just said? I just wanna make sure I heard it right. So you're here tonight not proposing a multifaceted, long-term solution that we would vote on saying, okay, here's the panacea, if we do all of these things, we've solved our problems. Sounds to me that what you're asking for is a, um, some assistance in buying time. So that make, making some decisions that will give us time to kind of figure out what that ultimate long-term solution is gonna be. Because some of what we've been talking about, I mean, the potentially pretty significant changes that would have to happen, and they're not gonna happen tomorrow or the next day. It could be a couple of years down the road for us to.
Yes, that was, I was asking the board if the board can, um, help us, even if it means taking our debt and putting it through taxation. This way, because with, that is one of the things that today, uh, I would recommend that the board raised 15, 30, 40% rate increase. And that will not solve our problem. But if, if we can take out the debt based on what we have right now, and we think that, uh, that will put us into a, or bring us to what I call, um, zero level. And then from that point, the board also, we add, instead of, for example, instead of 15, 20%, the board may also give us a rate of 7, 5%, but keep it at least for five years to build up the reserve. Now that we have, so, so that this way, uh, once that is done, within that five-year period, we'll have a couple of capital projects, like the Route 9 is coming. We also have a couple of lineings to do. I would like to put it on taxation because the reserve is still very fragile. It's not, based, that isn't my recommendation and if the board decides to go this route. Now, any other route that I, we think the board would like to go, uh, my view, based on a discussion we discussed in the past, will require a huge rate increase. And also will require, uh, a long-term in that, so, but without the taxation. And I think because of the uniqueness of sewer to the economy, I believe that if, if the board decides to go to taxation, uh, I'm sure we'll be able to, uh, we'll be able to, in my view, uh, defend that or.
And Chris, you're, I just wanna make sure, so I'm looking at the spreadsheet that has, it's got expenses and then CIP debt.
Yes.
At the second. So we're talking about $165,000, $170,000, right, per year? That's what?
Yes.
So when this topic came up before, I know that, um, there was a little bit of a powwow with, um, the town treasurer too about this because of the, the debt. Was there any argument? Like, well, was there any argument to the contrary that it would help the sewer department? Not, not the merits of, I know people have strong viewpoints on either side of it.
Just speaking mathematically in the short term, transferring the sewer debt to the tax rate would absolutely help out. It would, uh, take about $130,000 of annual debt payment out of that budget. Uh, and take a lot of pressure off the sewer rate. In the long-term mathematically, just talking about numbers here, um, it's very likely that with Route 9 project that we're gonna have to go for an SRF loan, uh, which is typically paid out of the sewer rates. Um, if we have spoken to the people who sold them on a sewer rate, uh, debt project, and then we have switched that over to the tax rate, it may be a hard pill to swallow, uh, to add more debt onto the sewer. Uh, because the voters may think, well, you said sewer before you made it taxes. Why should I accept that?
But is that why this is being proposed as a short-term? Like, do it for extra years?
So you wanna put it on real estate taxes? Is this what I'm understanding?
Well, one, one argument for doing that is it becomes deductible on the taxes.
Who's gonna pay what, is it real estate?
Whereas water and sewer are not deductible.
I mean, that the thing is, is like, just to put it right on the tax rate. We, I know we don't have that kind of money for capital. That's what we ran into this year with the generator and, you know, all those things. I mean, the only place we could pay it out of is free cash, something like that. But then that's, that would be a pretty big chunk of free cash as well, so.
You have the legal right, whether it's advisable or not, but you have the legal right to transfer this over to debt exclusion. So it would go on the tax rate.
But it would have to be voted on?
No.
No.
No, it's something that you can do.
Realistically, with the Route 9 reconstruction, that's gonna come out of taxation to some degree anyways, because there's no way we can pay for however many millions of dollars it's gonna be.
Oh, silver.
There, there's just no possible way to do it. We can raise rates 200% and we still wouldn't be able to cover even a portion of it. Um, and you can make the argument that the business district, commercial district benefits all of us with the tax rate. So I can, I can see selling that to the, to the voters as a reasonable, uh, solution there. As far as the debt service goes, uh, you know, as a, I would be for transferring, you know, doing it a year at a time, basically saying, hey, we'll cover this year. Buy us a little bit of time to see what we can come up with for down the line, something along those lines. But I don't know that I'd wanna transfer the entire, however many years of payments we have. Was it like 10 more years of payments?
About 10, 20.
Yeah, so.
But, but to that point, if we were able to take two years, that would be basically a $260,000 injection of cash.
Oh, yeah, but I just would wanna do it a year at a time though.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm just saying, if we were able to do two years, that's 260. That still doesn't get us out of the red. But it's better than nothing.
Yeah, and Chris, if we just did the one year, what's the, I mean, obviously we all want a long-term solution and this isn't it. But if we just did vote the one year at a time,
Yes.
does that hamstring you in some other way, or is that at least helpful?
It will still hamstring us because, except if the board, because for example, even with the two years, the board will still have to establish a rate increase. Now, the one year is, the rate increase will be smaller. And as we, our recommendation will be for the board to give us at least three to five years. And now we have to build the reserve and pay it to other debt. The two years will be good enough plus rate increase. Now, I am not here tonight to be able to recommend to the board what that rate increase will be, but there will be some rate increase and.
Yeah, just on that note, this is not our rate hearing, so we're not necessarily deciding on rates. We're just talking about.
But with that one year, we'll be better than nothing.
Yeah.
But as the chair, uh, talk, second, the two years will be better, or if the board wants to go year by year to see where we are in terms of, that, that's also a, a good solution for us. Our, our fear is that, um, even with the, even with the Route 9 project, we come before the board and we ask for the board to put it on taxation. We, we, we want to see whatever we can do to minimize the burden. Because eventually it's gonna come to, to that. So, but this, this structure in place where the board helps us, I think it will make, it will make it more feasible and better in terms of long-term projection.
Well, I'm certainly for having a, a, a meeting devoted to just this, whether it's a hosted select board meeting or with as many members as want to attend or, or not, or whether we have Ty and Bond there, Chris, and, and probably David and the treasurer as well.
Mm-hmm.
And just devoted to just talking about solutions. Because we came up with three of them last year, and all of them, I think, except for moving some money around, got pulled off the warrant by Tom Meeting time, so we, in effect, did not much, yeah.
And I think the, um, the collector's office too, from the standpoint of,
Right.
you know, when Sue was here last time, again, we talked about the possibility of creating another category and perhaps only going up on that one category. And then she brings to the table the actual, this is how many properties you're talking about and the dollars you're talking about.
Right.
Right? So it's helpful to have that available as well.
Yeah.
But I think a meeting just to talk about that so we're not rushed with other agenda items and can spend the time to actually hash, hash this out.
Okay, and I don't actually, personally, I don't think it's fair to put taxation on to people that don't have sewer. I pay well over $300 to have my tank pumped. And I do it every two years or every year, depending.
Yeah, no, I do too, but, um.
You know, so I, I don't feel like I should bear the burden of the sewer department.
But I, but I think.
The argument is the commercial district. Because of the bulk of the sewer revenue, right? Yeah, it's coming from commercial. And if we didn't have, the reason that we all have a $13, whatever we have, tax rate is because of that commercial district.
Yeah, definitely.
So that, that's the, the other argument, that we're all benefiting from it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't wanna have to pay for a residential section of town when I'm a septic user and not a sewer user. But I can say, because I'm not benefiting from that in any way, other than maybe attracting residents to live there and pay taxes as well. But with the commercial district, I can make the argument that, you know, I'm getting something out of that.
Yeah, it's kind of an investment in the.
Hotels, the meals.
Right, right.
Think of how much money we're getting that we didn't get before, just from those two categories.
Oh, I, I agree with the same tax rate. I'm just saying, not putting the burden for people that don't have septic either.
Mr. Chairman, I, I like, I, I know, that's why you said a little bit.
This is a whole, whole new discussion on, and we could take all night with this.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree. And, and what I wanted to get out of this was, what is our path moving forward? I, you know, um, if we wanna do a rate increase, I know that clock is ticking for, I think we missed the, this reading coming up.
Yes.
So it wouldn't really be, I don't, I honestly don't know.
I was just saying.
Yeah, 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 it probably was yesterday, but, um, when it was, it, we have a little bit of time, but not a lot of time if we wanna do a rate increase. We can strategize. I think a meeting that's more focused on this is a great idea. I talked to Chris about that as well, and, you know, just figuring out the logistics of that was the hard part of how we do all that. But I, I'm into doing it. Uh, so, yeah, I guess what I'm looking for is collectively, what kind of direction do we wanna take? I was thinking we could have a rate hearing next meeting, which is on the 19th, to try to just get a little something going. Um, but I think we also need a strategy for the longer term, what we wanna do.
Need to bring in the collector and the assessors in this because they play critical role in setting the tax rate.
Yeah.
But do we?
Do we wanna have that, the powwow session before we have it?
We can.
And I, I think we kinda have to.
Yeah.
Because I'm afraid it's just gonna be.
I think it gets us more buy-in if we do it, if we have a cohesive plan together, as opposed to just doing a rate increase because we think it's a good idea right now, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, and I think, you know, schedule, schedule a meeting, and if everybody can't be there, they can't be there. But at least enough people got in the room together that maybe we can start aligning.
What time of day is a good time of day to have a meeting like that, David? If we want the assessor, the treasurer, the collector, DPW there.
Does the assessor really have to be there though for, for this part of it? I, I mean, obviously if we're gonna say, hey, we're gonna move this to taxation, then yeah, we have to figure that out.
Mm-hmm.
As far as, I'm just thinking along the lines of, you know, I guess, moving money in other ways, other than just increasing the tax rate.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But I think with an advanced warning, something like late afternoon or...
Yeah, I was gonna suggest 10 o'clock in the morning, something like that.
That's not a bad thing.
That's late afternoon?
I was gonna say 10 o'clock in the morning.
You were gonna say 10:00 in the morning.
We've already been up for five hours, so, yeah.
Yeah, I think that the properties are pretty collective.
Department heads.
Select board's not gonna be available. Yeah. So would a late afternoon meeting work, David?
Sure.
Okay. Do we wanna pick a date? Do you wanna be here?
Do you guys wanna try to?
We could propose a date. I mean, it seems like late afternoon, but I know you're gone for a little while, but...
I'm gone next week, but so, but I have no... I'm good, as long as people talk about it.
We can figure it out tomorrow, the next day, between all of us talking. You won't even do your little survey things, or whatever they're called, but...
I will just note a Survey Monkey, we can work on some dates, we'll send it out.
Yeah, that sounds perfect, great. Let's stop there.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
In this meeting of brainstorming, do you want me to bring in Tiamon? Or just, or bring in other entities?
I think if Sharon is there for now, that might be good.
Because what we have now is good enough, in my view.
Yeah.
Because if we bring Tiamon, that's also money.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I'm worried, I don't know what their value would be for this discussion at that moment.
I don't think we'll be of any balance.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe after the meeting, after this meeting, and the board maybe wants to talk to them, and I think then, at least, we have some...
Because I think Sharon's got a pretty good comfort level on that spreadsheet. So with that, we can at least propose ideas and kinda plug 'em in, and I think that would be good. Yeah, so, okay. All right. Good?
Thanks for reminding us, Rome is burning.
It's a smelly fire now.
I guess we could do senior center librarian fire substation real quick, and then do the warrant. I'm gonna do it that way?
Sure.
All right, so, I think the fire substation and the senior center both have a lot of change orders to list through.
I thought the fire station wasn't doing things.
Just gonna say, the fire doesn't have any change orders.
We got money to change order, so I'll put that out. If we're gonna upgrade and make it so that we don't have to go back in 10 years and replace things, then why not? That's how we're looking at it.
We've got the steel structure.
Now, I see layer after layer after layer going on. There's a new layer going on, I think.
That's the water.
It's like an onion, yeah.
Making it tight.
We approved all the change orders.
Do you wanna go through these, Joyce, or...
Want me to?
You wanna go, you wanna go first?
Sure. Basically, I don't know if anybody's driven by it or not, but these are... We have the roof, what's been completed is the recent activity is completed, the windows install, completed the roofing, underlying, and trim work, started the standing seam metal roof install, started the siding installation, started the mechanical, electrical plumbing, and fire protection roughin'. So we have partial red roof, one part of it. And then the bottom part of the building is also gonna be red, so, you know, the boards on there. So we're getting there. So, inside, we're just roughing it. At this point, we're electrical and kind of a shell in there. You can see through it, it looks big right now until the walls get up. One month look ahead is continue the roofing system install, continue the siding install, complete the MEP FP roughin', and start insulation and drywall install. So in all, after said and done, I'll go through the order changes, but the contingency with bid savings was 682. Contingency balance with approved and pending changes is 589, 455. And I don't know if you had seen some of your changes. There's an ad hoc committee plaque that we said yes to. That was for $1,351. Do you want me to say the numbers, or does it need to?
Joyce?
Yeah, okay. So PCO 16 is $1,351.62 for the ad hoc building committee dedication plaque. PCO 15, $1,569.61. It's the countertop material change. In the kitchen, this is the cost to furnish and install a solid surface countertop at the kitchen cabinetry in lieu of plastic laminate that is owned in the bid docs. So it's an upgrade, so that it reduces like the laminate, but at least it will serve the purpose and last longer than laminate would. So the countertop was specified as plastic laminate as a cost savings, but now the project has a large bid savings. It makes sense to make countertops a more durable surface, and this will match the solid surface window sills. We have a PCO 14, $1,951.26, not to exceed, change wall surface to FRP at storage room. This is the cost to furnish and install FRP board at the storage room off of the apparatus bay in lieu of a painted drywall surface, so we don't have to keep repainting that area. The reasoning for this change is to have a more durable surface in this room, knowing that it will be experienced exposure to water. PCO 17, $3,877.31, not to exceed, and this is additional interior and exterior signage. This is the cost to furnish and install additional interior and exterior signage, you know, like road war, road signs. And then on the inside of the interior doors, to know where you're at. PCO 11, $1,175. Attic stock overhead door panels. This is the cost to furnish two additional overhead door panels that Cadley can store and use in the event the installed ones are damaged. PCO 18 is $2,975.22. Framing detail at fascia. This is the cost to frame the fascia box out at the gable side as is regular to properly close off that condition. This is required framing was not detailed in the architectural drawings to begin with. You can actually probably see that this side of the building here, when it comes down like this, it jetty's out, so that they're putting in a box there so that it goes flush. So they didn't realize that when it was coming down into box there, right there at that point. So it just makes for better lines there. PC 22, $2,342.46, not to exceed additional electrical outlets at dispatch desk. This is the cost to wire additional power and data outlets at the dispatch room. The need for these additional power data outlets are being discovered now, because during design, it was not understood what was going to be purchased for a dispatch desk and console system. And that console system that they're putting in is almost identical to what they put in at center station not too long ago. PCR, PCO 19R1, $1,567.17, rerouting of vent pipe. This is the cost to reroute three installed vent pipes with apparatus base so that they're concealed above the ceiling and not exposed in the space as are currently routed. So it's just adding to the vent, not actually having to redo it, but to add to it, to make it go up.
So moved.
Thank you.
And any further discussion on those changes?
So your 589 that you have left, that's including these changes?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Just a quick question, will there be a backup dispatch there? Are they planning on doing that now?
Not at this time.
Not at this time, okay. So they won't, but they'll have everything ready to go, but it won't be fully functional.
If something should happen, well, they are gonna have everything in there.
They will.
They will.
It's just not staffed.
Just not staffed right now.
That's what I mean. They could, if something happens to the center station, they can move up there and have operations. Okay, that's great, yeah.
They have a generator up there?
Yes, yes, there is.
With a long extension cord to here.
Yes, there is.
And then senior center, Jane, do you wanna give an update for the building? And I can read the PCOs.
All right, so the building is coming along really well. They've finished up all of the inspections for wire and fire prevention, which now permits them to finish insulation and sheet rockin', so that's going along. And they have a huge crew in there. I mean, day to day, the difference is amazing. And I encourage any of you to wander over there and look at it. I mean, the board, I don't mean the town, I mean the general. They're gonna do paint samples for us next week. And we're moving right along. The tile has been done in the bathroom, the walls tiled, floor tiles haven't been done yet. And they're working diligently in the mechanical room, getting the hot water heaters and furnishing everything lined up.
The drywall's only got like a week left or something, right?
I know, and it's a whole building.
It's crazy.
But they really are doing a nice job.
Yeah.
Still on track for April, May?
So we're on track for May 1st, thank you. And we would like to ask the select board to set our grand opening ribbon cutting ceremony for May 14th. That will give us time to get used to the building before we have visitors.
What time would that be?
Well, I think that, in the sense, depends upon who's coming and what's available.
So I'm gonna take this date of May 14th, and I'm going to invite the governor?
Yes.
Okay, and then I will let you know when I hear back from his office?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then I have updated the earlier list we used for the groundbreaking ceremony. And I'm still working on it, but I will get you that in a few days.
Okay. We can, do you have a design again that you wanna use for invitations that are sent out?
But we could work on that.
Okay.
Great.
And then one question that came up at the meeting today, since Chris is right here, was the ditches behind the senior center, just if you wanna clean them at all before they're done with construction? Just putting that on your radar, I don't know if there's anything there.
So what happens is, the area on the east side of the building is a conservation area that everybody sort of closed their eyes to at the moment. But if you wanna get those ditches cleaned before everything's done, it's probably a really good time.
Yeah. Okay, and then I have three PCOs. PCO 035R1, it's a call for aid system. And this is a call for aid system that goes in the bathrooms, and it's to switch from a hardwired system to a wireless system in order to make the install at the toilet partitions appropriate.
You just have to yell?
Yeah.
So what this is, originally, they were gonna do hardwire, but we, because it's a senior center, want a handicap pull in every stall, not just the handicap. So that involves a lot more, which is what's reflected here. And they pointed out, doing it as a wireless system is really much cleaner than running wires down thin metal partitions.
And that's, I don't know if I said, it's $4,123.69. Then we have PCO 38, which is three dedication plaques. This is the cost of, oh, it's $3,822.61, the cost to furnish and install the three bronze dedication plaques. And then PCO 37, hot water pumps for $692.15. And this is because it would just discover that the furnished and installed hot water pumps are not meant for potable water, and this is the cost to replace the provided domestic hot water pumps with pumps that are meant for potable water.
Not that people are planning on drinking out of the hot water, but you never can tell.
Yeah.
So it's a safety issue.
Was that a improper bid by the plumbing contractor?
I don't know where it came from, but the fact that... I mean, I would not normally think of worrying about a hot water heater, worrying about people drinking, what's coming out of it. But in the phase of litigation, it was recommended that we do this.
And so, and just to, the remaining contingency that we have on the project out of the original $419,800 contingency.
And that too is including what you just said?
That's including what we said. I have a motion.
So moved.
Stop a second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And last but not least, the library.
Library, I can, Dr. is fairly visual right now, so I think everybody's getting their daily written reports on it. There was one issue that came, had to do with water pressure, Chris? I don't know if you actually could speak for that a little bit?
Yes. We, it didn't pass again, so we would want to go back on the 24th. We hope that the, the, that period of time, it may pass. I think, I think if it doesn't pass, then we'll write in to the board and let the board know officially. But the OPM has promised us that they will do all they could to make sure the pressure, and also the, because that is very needed. The fire chief is also putting pressure that that should be done also, so we...
So there's water pressure in the sprinkler system, the fire suppression system?
It's somewhere between the main and the building?
Yes.
So that's the snag that came up fairly recently. But other than that, nothing to report. Again, everything's moving along. They're obviously wrapping the steel structure right now, so you can see. And target date's still late summer in terms of the opening.
Great.
Charles is too.
Anything else on the buildings? Good?
Moving along.
All right. So we've got the fiscal year 2021 budgets, and May 7th, 2020 annual town meeting warrant. And...
So budgets are flowing in, I've been getting lots of emails today. So I will tighten up the budget and chase down those departments that I haven't heard from yet. And with respect to the town meeting warrant, I've been receiving requests for articles today, so I would ask that the board close the warrant. I'll take the language and I'll tighten things up, check the numbers, and come up with another draft of the warrant. This was a preliminary preview warrant, but if you could close that warrant, I can get it off to the planning board, the CPA committee, planned capital planning committee, and finance committee, for them to start working.
Make a motion and close the warrant.
Question. Any further discussion on the warrant? Closing it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Warrant is closed. Anything else needed on the warrant right now?
Nope, we're off to the races. Off to the races.
One thing I did want to talk to the board about was just our review of the budget. We're gonna kind of put it in the finance committee's hands. Finance committee has given us a schedule of when they are reviewing the different budget series. And I was just wondering if it would be good to kinda have a couple of check-ins with them? I was thinking after they do the 200 series, check in on March 12th. And then, again, after they do the 500 and 600 series and 300 series, on March 31st, so that we could, if we see any problems after those series, we can have some time to address them and meet with those departments if we want to. Or if there are specific departments or series we want to schedule beforehand. Or if there are specific departments or series we want to schedule beforehand. But I was thinking at least to get that check-in with them, with the finance committee would be good.
Yeah. That's a good idea.
Okay. So we'll do that. Try to squeeze those into meetings. That's, that's all I had there unless somebody has anything else regarding the budget?
Nope.
Last on our normal agenda here, I think, is the FEMA risk mapping assessment and planning Middle Connecticut watershed discovery process.
You said the planning board's going through this now?
Planning board is going through this, but you may want to take a look. What they're doing is they're changing both the hydrology models as well as the contour models for flooding in town of Hadley. So previously, they're on twenty-foot contours, now they're down to two-foot contours and they're using a different hydraulic model for flooding on the river.
Dramatically extended the flood length.
Yeah, basically, Hadley got a lot wetter and people are going to have to pay more for flood insurance.
They're going to go buy a canoe. Got to buy a canoe.
Buy a canoe.
So this has already been done though, or they're in the process of doing it?
They're in the process of doing it. We have a comment period until the eighteenth. So if you look at the maps and you say, I've never seen flooding in this area, and that's some of the comments that we provided them during the discovery meetings, that would be good if you could take a copy and just mark it up and we could get it off to the engineers by the eighteenth.
Now, this PDF that was included doesn't have any maps in it.
The appendices are fine.
This was, that's what I didn't get, because this was the discovery report, so it had a kind of a list of the process, but I didn't see any substance there.
They're all blank.
Yep.
Yep.
And I saw a lot about what they were going to do, but I didn't see anything specific to Hadley in there. That's what I was.
Right, I mean, it was that one kind of regional bit?
Yeah, which was tough to get much of.
Sounds good.
This is the right one. And I didn't know if this was going to be more, this was kind of an indication of more to come or.
I know that there was attachments to this report, which I didn't post because they're mostly commentary from the discovery.
Okay.
It was also a huge file.
Yeah.
But when you say take a look at it, I mean, I'm looking at, what page is this?
It's like eight.
Figure three discovery map, Middle Connecticut watershed prioritization overview. And it's hard to get any granularity to even, you know, I mean, I can see like a yellow line running through, but it's not.
Bill Dwyer says it's a huge download and he will send you all the link.
Okay. Or if we could just get the map, the map of Hadley or something like that, not maybe, because it sounds like, you know, there's a lot of areas, so.
So I'm just hitting the zoom button here.
Yeah, I tried that, but it still doesn't.
It still doesn't. I mean, you can't even really pick out streets or.
Yeah.
Resolution isn't that.
So I say we take Squire Dwyer up on his.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so do we, let's just, is there any immediacy on this one? Can we?
Comment periods.
When's the comment period over?
Eighteen.
February eighteenth.
Which is the day before our next meeting. Okay.
But the planning board is, is working on this project. They've been working on it since January.
Right.
Okay. So maybe we can email, if we can get the map, we can individually email comments to David and he can kind of compile them for now.
So this, just to be clear, the comment period is just for the select board to them or is this a public comment period like the federal government typically does for policymaking items? Is this where residents can comment or just us?
Just us.
Okay. Town administrator report, David, anything that we missed in there we should know about?
Let me see, what did I have to say? I'm just, I'm an hour late, so I'll go through pretty quickly. Okay. So the Goodman Memorial Library, the old building, we're preparing an application for CPA funding to upgrade the electrical systems, ceiling in order to start moving some of the departments that we have here over there, make use of that building. Town hall pillars, that, those bid documents have been prepared and there was a delay in getting the prevailing wages, but we should be ready to send that project out for bid. Same with the Russell School roof repair for eight thousand dollars. I've been, I'm asking the department heads to move forward with a number of capital projects that have been hanging around for a while, so those projects could be moving forward. We just did the marijuana MVP. Moving that forward. And there's going to be a listening session soon and Chris and I met with engineers to talk about using the money for the MVP program for the dyke. So as soon as those deadlines come up, we jump in on a block grant. We talked about DLTA, we're waiting to hear from them. The Senate has redone the conservation land special act of legislation for the preserving land on the Holyoke Range. And we will bring that to your attention at your next meeting.
David, just going back to the MVP, that meeting of interested parties to get together to talk about the structures along the.
Yeah. I haven't organized anything on that.
Okay. But it's still on your to-do list, right?
It's on my list of things to do.
Okay.
Just ran through, we've touched on a lot of this. Yeah, so everything else is moving forward and we've talked on a lot of these topics tonight already.
Bay Road Bridge, you think it's going to go twenty sixteen, twenty twenty-six? Twenty twenty-six?
Go back and back.
It's done.
Yeah, so they've, they've submitted their seventy-five percent complete plans. It's going to take them about a year to do the environmental permit, permitting and the right-of-way acquisitions. And they should be off to going on that project. They'll be closing it down one lane at a time. There'll be no weight restriction on the bridge this time because they've already repaired the bridge for weight issues.
So this twenty-six that you put in here is not really going to happen? Were they offered to defer the project until?
I haven't heard them say anything meaningful about deferring it.
Okay. This was just a little, maybe put in there to, maybe I'll be retired by then.
They had expressed willingness to defer the project until twenty twenty-six. They have not made that statement for a while now.
Okay.
Did we get anywhere with Senator Conover's office asking for help in getting that deferment for one project or the other?
Yes. So there, we've talked to her a number of times about the impact upon east-west traffic if those two projects, the Bay Road Bridge and the Route nine widening happened at the same time, and so they are allies with us.
Great. Okay. That is all of our regular meeting. We were going to have an executive session. I don't know if someone would like to make a motion for the executive session?
Before we do that.
Oh, oh, there is one more thing. I'm sorry, yes, thank you, David. One more thing.
So what was that one thing that just came in?
I got it here too, if you want.
Oh, it's the agreement with the KP Law about the projects, David, that you're working on with Amerist and the water in the sewer. KP Law represents both towns, and so they're potentially in conflict of interest dealing with negotiations about our intermunicipal agreement. In the past, we've signed a waiver allowing them to work with both towns on single projects. We did that in the case of the gas moratorium. And so they have submitted a waiver for this particular project. And if you're agreeable, we should sign it and get it off, so the project moving forward.
Make a motion to approve the waiver for water and sewer MLU review.
Second.
All those in favor? Jennifer, did you have a comment? No?
No, I'm waiting for you when you stop.
All those in favor, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, David, for remembering.
So I'll make a motion then that we go into.
Can I, can you just, it's just a reminder that we still need submissions for the Fred Oakley and the dedication of the annual report to be submitted to info@hadlyma.org.
And when is that due?
As soon as possible would be great.
Okay.
And then annual reports, and I'm looking at you, sir.
I know.
Are due on February fourteenth. If boards and committees could please submit their annual reports to info@hadlyma.org.
Thank you, thank you. Any other announcements that we missed?
No, but I'd kind of like to have us take into consideration the annual town report, at least partially, that we've had so many people and volunteers over the years that we don't ever actually dedicate the book to. And I was thinking about this year dedicating it to the townspeople of Hadley. And I don't know how else we would word it, but for our employees also. Because I think so many of, everybody gets missed on what they do and what they volunteer. And I just think it would be nice that we would honor them because the town is what is made up of our people.
The Hadley Rocks Award?
Hadley Rocks Award, yeah. So maybe something along those lines, something to consider anyway.
Okay, yeah. Any other announcements before I jump into this?
Go for it.
I was trying, trying to wrap it up.
All right.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, I would like to make motion that we go into executive session per provisions of Master of Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A eight, to consider applicants for employment or appointment by a preliminary screening committee, which the chair declares that an open meeting will have a detrimental effect in obtaining qualified applicants, provided however that this clause shall not apply to any meeting, including meetings of a preliminary screening committee, to consider an interview of applicants who have passed a prior preliminary screening. And this is for the town administrator position.
So moved.
I second, you seconded it, right?
Yeah.
Okay. As Chair of Hadley Select Board, I state that the board has moved and seconded to enter into executive session and that I state that discussing the matter in open session will have an adverse effect on the town of Hadley. We will not reconvene in open session. Roll call vote, please.
Phil?
Yes.
Kegel?
Yep.
Stanley?
Yes.
Chonggu?
Yes.
Thank you, have a good night.
See you.